Call to me, door.
I pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, created in God's name.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Moore?
Here.
Ms. Thompson?
Here.
Mr. Morris?
Here.
Mr. Bittner?
Here.
Mr. Shaboo?
Here.
Mr. Lunder?
Here.
Mr. Johnson?
Here. Approval of the minutes from the regular meeting of council May twenty-third, twenty-twenty-three. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes?
Motion for approval.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Morris, seconded by Mrs. Thompson for approval. Roll call, please.
Ms. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Thompson?
Aye.
Mr. Morris?
Aye.
Mr. Bittner?
Staying.
Mr. Shaboo?
Aye.
Mr. Lunder?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye. Correspondence clerk, is there any correspondence tonight?
I have none.
Does any member of council have correspondence tonight? Okay, very none. We will move on to administrative department head reports. Mayor and safety director, Mr. Eva, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Johnson, members of council, the public here this evening. I'd like to start off with the fire department report from May. After the month of May, there were a hundred and three calls for service, fifteen fire service calls, eighty-eight rescue EMS calls. Of those eighty-eight calls, seventeen called were for invalid assets. There were no calls for an overdose requiring Narcan. In the month of May, the department participated in a read of firefighter at the Menorah Lake branch library. They hosted three kindergarten classes from Lake Dona Creek for station tours. They participated in the Ambassment of the Mordecai Parade and also participated in the Menorah Harbor Yacht Club and Mordecai Ceremony. Congratulations to our members who celebrated a service anniversary in May. Firefighter Mike Spencer, thirty-eight years with the department. Firefighter Lee Sanders, eight years with the fire department. Also, I sent forwarded an email to Mr. Johnson and Mrs. Moore. I did get an email from Brian Smalling of the envision group in regard to a comprehensive management plan for the city. I told him I would mention it during the council meeting and get back to him. I know we had talked about this earlier in the year. And he decided this would go through a bidding process if a council would like to report with this. I don't know if we can talk about it in business later, but I told him I'd get back to him. Thank you for your important.
Thank you, Ministerate Director, Mr. Ness. Good evening.
Good evening. Oh, if you may have noticed that the campaign in blue, the fire department and city hall entrance, I think it was very good. I'm still working on the audit last piece, so this month should be the end of that. And I received a roof scan today that shows some pretty large patches of where the installation of that one of these roofs. So six patches total really be pretty good. Just so you're aware, I'm sure that I was trying to make copies, but the copy is quite. I can share that with you. That's all.
Thank you. Law Director, Mr. Lyons. Good evening.
Good evening, President. I don't have a report.
Good. Any questions for the administration? I'll ask a question. Mr. Lyons, are the ordinances tonight on the charter levies? Do those need to pass tonight, or what is the timing that's required?
You can do free readings, even charter amendments. The charter amendment they have passed by both five or the members of council in order to put it on the ballot, people vote on it. It's not a levy in the same sense than you would do it under chapter fifty-seven oh five of Fire and Rescue Code, where you have to first ask for the auditor's opinion into how much it will pay. So we've been supposed to three readings on this. You could add if you wanted, and then it would be sent to the board of electors.
What is the final date that it needs to be to the?
The ninety days, you know, which is what they look for for levies is in August, August ninth, I think, is the date, August fifth, I think. Have that, so we have to.
The reason I ask is because the rest of my colleagues on council decide they want to take that recess during summer for the first meeting of each month, so that would only give us two readings before it would be due.
Today. Next meeting, the twenty-seventh.
Yeah, okay, that would be. Yeah.
Eighteen in July.
Okay, then we'd be all right.
There, another thing I'm working at, discussing with the administration, I have been keeping you abreast of it is perhaps something else to put on the ballot in regards to the road control project. If we're going to do that, then we would have to suspend the rules on that and order W P August seventh. Okay, but I'm still waiting for additional information on that. I actually, I had a nice conversation with the attorney, Sid Board. And there are some advantages to doing it through the Sid Board rather than doing it on our own. And she, along with the Department of Taxation, are looking into the best way that we could do it so that it would be limited to that project and it just wouldn't be for a general purpose like parks and recreation. So that's seemed like it would be better for cities because that would definitely be earmarked. I'm hoping that we'll have something for next Thursday. I guess the agenda, I mean, you and Michelle, then whatever, decide if you want to put it on the agenda. I would try to have it tonight, but it's a unique thing and it's just.
Any questions, council? Okay, then we will move on to board committee and commission reports. Parks and Recreation Board.
Parks and Rec met on Thursday, May twenty-fifth. We are going to have our first stargazing, tentatively right now set up for June twenty-third at nine P M. It's going to be for all ages. We're going to do it here at City Hall. We're gonna get some loaner telescopes from the library that they loan out as long as you have a library card. We haven't come up with a name for that yet. That's still to be determined, but they have lots of things planned. One of the other things that were brought up was a community garden. Another thing was more use of the city hall pavilion, maybe do like rock painting for kids, get more kids to come up to the park and use the pavilion. One of the other, a couple of other things that were brought up were a farmer's market, establish opportunities and collaboration between police and fire departments. And our meeting ended seven thirty-five, I believe.
Good. Hey, planning and zoning commission.
Here, we met on May five, two thousand twenty-three, in attendance with Susan Case and the chairperson, Mike Sweeney, Gary Leonard, Brent Moore, myself, Dave Eva, Jim Lunder, Michelle Moore, Rob Johnson, and Paul Moore. Two conditional use permits were approved for five years, one for Mario's Lounge and the second for Anderson Pub. One conditional use permit for Ambassment Post one oh nine was approved for three years requesting a butthole replaced in the rear of the property and to complete the submitting of the bargain. The committee discussed ordinance twenty-two-two dash oh dash twenty-five, the R car coordinate, and approved it with some minor typing correction. Ordinance four fifty-two point one seven under A one definition of driveway was recommended it should be copied and put in. Ordinance twenty-eighty point oh five possibly under A four and ordinance twelve eighty point oh seven should in its entirety be moved to title for parking for enforcement by the police. The chairperson presented several changes to the plan in city commission rule after late discussion changes were approved. And we ended at seven forty-seven. May five. June five.
Sorry. Ordinance committee from May sixteen. Ordinance committee, May sixteenth, time start with seven, we did inspection, rental inspections again. And attends with myself, Mr. Morris, Mr. Shaboo, and Mr. Johnson. We discussed quite length, we decided we are going to change the title of the ordinance itself to include inspections of rental housing, which is described throughout the chapter. Rental units will be used throughout. We're leaving in a zoning inspector due to that is stuff out in our ordinance. And the appeal. We're getting further clarification, which I did. I will send all these changes to the two committee members. As long as they agree that everything looks like what we said, we will send it back. Leading into the seventh six. Any other board commissions or committees have met? Very none. We will now move on to open to the public to speak. This is your opportunity to come to the lectern, state your name and address for the record. This is your opportunity to speak to council. It is a back and forth between council and yourself. And there's also a strict limit by council rules of ten minutes total per person, so you would like to come to the lectern? This is your opportunity. Hearing none. We move on to legislation for council. Resolution number twenty-two-three dash R dash fifteen, if you please read it by its title.
Resolution number two, twenty-two-three R fifteen, second reading, a resolution approving the twenty-two-four budget.
Okay, we need to amend this to change the public hearing to June twenty-seventh and from June twentieth, unless you guys want to have a special meeting of council for a public hearing.
Motion to amend.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Bittner, seconded by Mrs. Moore to amend, say, June twenty-seventh rather than June twentieth. Roll call, please.
Ms. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Thompson?
Aye.
Mr. Morris?
Aye.
Mr. Bittner?
Aye.
Mr. Shaboo?
Aye.
Mr. Lunder? Mr. Johnson?
Aye. This will go to third reading and the public hearing will be on the twenty-seventh. Ordinance number twenty-two-two dash oh dash twenty-five, if you could please read it by its title.
Ordinance number twenty-two-two dash oh dash twenty-five, third reading, assigned to Planning and Zoning Commission, an ordinance amending appendix H to the codified ordinances, R T A R area, and declaring an emergency.
This has been returned from planning and zoning, is that correct?
Correct.
Good. We will be scheduling a public hearing on that because it is a change of the zoning later in this meeting, so it will stay on third reading for a while longer. Ordinance number twenty-two-three dash oh dash zero six, that is still assigned to the ordinance committee, is that correct?
Correct.
Good, and we'll skip it. Ordinance number twenty-two-three dash oh dash zero seven, third reading amended. If you could please read it by its title.
Ordinance number twenty-two-three dash oh dash zero seven, third reading amended. An ordinance creating new ordinance ten twenty-two point twelve, local tree lawn regulation, not involving utilities and or telecommun- telecommunications devices.
This is referring to a committee of the whole meeting that has been scheduled for this Thursday in reference to the trees, which is a whole other chapter, so this is going to stay on third reading. Ordinance number twenty-two-three dash oh dash zero nine, third reading.
Ordinance number twenty-two-three oh dash zero nine, third reading, an ordinance amending codified ordinance four-five-two point sixteen, parking of trucks and other large vehicles.
Discussion. Anything on this? Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second. Made by Mrs. Thompson, seconded by Mr. Lunder. Roll call, please.
Ms. Moore?
No.
Ms. Thompson?
Aye.
Mr. Morris?
No.
Mr. Bittner?
Aye.
Mr. Shaboo?
Aye.
Mr. Lunder?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
No. Those pass. Nor is, I know, ordinance number twenty-two-three dash oh dash twelve, please read it by its title.
Ordinance number twenty-two-three dash oh dash twelve. An ordinance providing for the submission to the electorate of a proposed amendment to the Charter of the City of Menorah Lake, authorizing the amendment of Article twelve, section twelve zero five, in order to continue the existing one point one mil tax levy for the purpose of providing for fire operations of the city for five more years through tax year twenty-twenty-eight.
Any discussion on this?
I. This is approving for us to send this to the Board of Elections to be put on the ballot, ballot, excuse me, ballot, so that our residents can vote and let us know their decision about continuing these levies to support our road program, our police department, our fire department. I would be in favor of suspending the rules so that this can get to the Board of Elections and put out to the public, which is appropriate, in my opinion.
Anyone else?
I'm opposed to suspending the rules because as Mr. Lyons and yourself pointed out, there's plenty of time to get this done.
Okay, anyone else? I'm on the same page as Michelle. This isn't like passing anything. This is putting it out for our voters to decide and having. Let's. Okay, my comment would be that I would prefer that it stay for three readings so that if there's any feedback from the residents beforehand, we can hear that.
If I could add to with the fire operations, I know the chief would like to talk to you about revising.
Then you better act fast.
You won't be at the next meeting.
Check. This will stay on second, go to second reading? Good.
I think for the record, I didn't have that heard. I think Michelle would have.
Was it seconded? I didn't hear a second.
Oh, it was second.
I did not hear a second. It was just, okay. All right, ordinance number twenty-two-three dash oh dash thirteen, if you please read it by its title.
Ordinance number twenty-two-three dash oh dash thirteen. An ordinance providing for the submission to the electorate of a proposed amendment to the Charter of the City of Menorah Lake, authorizing the amendment of Article twelve, section twelve point oh four, in order to continue the existing one point five mil tax levy for the purpose of providing for police operations of the city for five more years.
Any discussion on this? And this will go to second reading. Ordinance number twenty-two-three dash oh dash fourteen, if you please read it by its title.
Ordinance number twenty-two-three dash oh dash fourteen. An ordinance providing for the submission to the electorate of a proposed amendment to the Charter of the City of Menorah Lake, authorizing the amendment of Article twelve, section twelve point zero six, in order to continue the existing one point two mil tax levy for the purpose of providing for road construction and repair purposes for the city for five more years through tax year twenty-twenty-eight.
Any discussion on this? Very none. This will go on second reading. Old business. I'm going to move, right now, the expenditure for C T consultants was listed on a new business, but it's really old business, so I'm going to move that up without any objection from anyone. Mr. Ness, would you like to correct your statement from last time about the expenditure from from C T consultants, just for the record, so that we can make sure.
Last council meeting, I think sixty-four percent of the design layout for was completed. That was a mistake. At sixty-four percent is of the design layout for the least locker room. There's actually that completed, we were paying, we had to pay the dime for. Where did I make it?
Okay, thank you. So this gets us back to the loba discussion, and that is, first of all, do we want to put it on a levy before the voters to decide whether we pay for it? We want to take out the Sid loan for it, or do we want to do nothing at all? We tabled this from last time, and I hope you guys had time to just think about it now. Yes, Mr. Morris.
Something needs to be done, for sure. Otherwise, we're going to continue to lose that properly. What the procedure, though, I have very mixed emotions about, that hundred and two thousand dollars to C T consultants to do something that I think I have heard from the people on Salida, they got for a lot less money than that. I think is a mistake. If I'm not mistaken, that is what we're asking for, correct? Hundred and two thousand dollars towards the revenge, the engineering process of the revenge of the partner.
Right. Discussion right now is, what do we want to do and how we want to pay for? And before we even talk about making an expenditure on anything.
For moving forward with a levy of the ballot.
Mrs. Moore?
We get a lot of feedback from the community about do something to save the park, do something to save the park, do something to save the park. The investment to save the park is well over one point two million dollars roughly. That's the, I'm going to keep it over a million dollars to get that done. That is whether we take out a Sid loan, whether we take out a bond, whether we do other types of financing. It's going to take some type of financing to complete this project. We don't have a million dollars edge on hand and just write a check for it. I think that we present this to the voters and let them decide on if they want to fund a million dollars to put in a revenge at the park. Whether they, whether it be, eventually somebody's going to pay for it some way, somehow. If, if we have to cut services to be able to make a loan payment, or if we get approval to do a levy to pay for it, it's still coming out of the residents' pockets in a way, and I think they have a right to weigh in on such a large decision or larger expenditure.
Mr. Lunder?
I'm for a Sid loan. Only reason I'm for a Sid loan is just because if the levy does not pass, okay, that's in November. Now, we've got to go another year possibly trying to get another Sid loan. And we may not get the Sid loan because of other cities that are going to be applying for it. There's a third go around on this, which puts it off to either twenty-twenty-four or twenty-twenty-five. By then, we could probably lose another twenty-three of the, of the partner. So I'm for the Sid loan.
Hey, you guys know my opinion on it from last meeting, that I don't think we could swallow that much debt without having some kind of levy for it, because once we take on that debt, we're paying for it whether we like it or not, and you know, we look back just what, twelve, thirteen, fourteen years ago, where we had quite a bit of debt that we've been whittling down. But we also had reduction in revenues, which then resulted in reduction in head counts for our departments. Hiring freezes, and what I keep hearing is that we want to add firefighters, we want the police department, once more full-time police officers rather than part-time. How do we afford those things if we're taking on enormous amounts of debt? We're also paying enormous amounts of interest on that debt. So that, that's a pretty scary amount, and that's not even talking about the current debt level we have. And then you throw in the need to replace the roof of this building and the, and the attached buildings at another five hundred thousand dollars, and it's like we're not like the federal government, we can't just keep printing money. You know, we can't take on trillions of dollars of debt and do whatever we want. We have to keep paying for it.
There's another, I'm sure another major expenditure we're going to be faced with before too long. The fire departments and vehicles are aging. Sooner or later, Chief Pachazco is going to have to come to the council and the administration about replacing those, and they're not cheap. They're well over three hundred thousand dollars per vehicle.
Yeah, you have any feeling that was what the next, that levy part was?
It's a possibility. It's a possibility, but.
Personally, I don't think the residents are going to vote for a park levy because we have three other parks that the people vote for. I drive by that park a little, and during the day, there isn't that many people there. I don't know what's going on at night, but there's not that many people. Most of those people, I feel, are the ones that live in that neighborhood. This park over here, the playground here is going all day long with the kids, well, same way with Better Beach Park. And I know they got stuff over in McManay. So I personally don't think it's going to pass if it goes to the ballot.
And I personally don't fear what the residents decide they want to do. It's their money. Whether it's taking on a levy or whether we're paying it out of our own general fund every year.
I understand what you're going, but I'm looking at losing more of the lake funds.
And.
Pretty soon, we're going to be up to Thunderbird.
And what I'm going to say is that Mother Nature is a hell of a lot smarter than anybody in this room. And we may be able to slow it down, but I'm not convinced that we're ever going to be able to stop it completely. And so we may have a plan and we may be able to, you know, do something there. But yeah, Mother Nature is a hell of a lot smarter than anybody here. Anyone else?
I think I would like just, I mean, I understand both points. I get both views. But I think putting it out on a levy for the residents to vote, I think that is what we're going to get the answer of what they want to see that part. If they know it's not going to pass, that part's going to go eventually. It will go.
So can I get a motion to that we want to put this before the voters?
Yeah, I was just wondering. We have neighbors on both sides of the park, and if we, I'm just throwing out a if we don't fix it, will that affect them and how responsible are we to those on both sides of the park? Just throwing out a question.
Yes, it will probably affect them if we don't do anything.
Do they require us to do something?
I think so.
No.
No.
Just a question.
You were saying you need something?
I would like a motion that we want to put this before the voters, just so that we can.
I'll make that motion. We put that, this topic in front of the voters.
Okay, made by Mr. Morris, seconded by Mr. Bittner. To go forward with a levy for the loba beach revenge. Roll call, please.
Ms. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Thompson?
Aye.
Mr. Morris?
Aye.
Mr. Bittner?
Aye.
Mr. Shaboo?
Aye.
Mr. Lunder?
No.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. President, can I answer a question?
Yes.
There's no question, we can put this on the ballot. Let me bang up. In order to put a levy on the ballot, you have to leave one of the requirements, you know, for allowing a tax to go on the ballot in order to be voted on by the people. One of the provisions that allows you to put it on is general operating expenses that you can use for anything. Another one is police, fire. Another one is parks and recreation. I know we can put it on parks and recreation. What I was trying to come up with was just a to pay off the note that it would be obligated to, you know, for Sid, Sid structure so that it would just be note specific, so that we can tell the residents that it's only, that money can only be used for this road control project. If it turns out because of state law, the Department of Taxation says that we're not allowed to use that because technically not our loan, it's the shoreline improvement district loan. Do we still want, you still want me to draw up the levy for for parks and recreation, and then you'll just have to explain to the voters, have, you know? for parks and recreation, and then you'll just have to explain to the voters, as you know, that it'll only be used for that purpose.
Yeah, I think that's the general intent, counsel, is that correct?
Yes, but we can do the first one with a bond, we would prefer that, but if we can't, then I'll draw up the parks and recreation. Uh, you know, based on the numbers that charity had, I was going to do it fifteen years, not five years. They haven't renewed to.
Right.
Getting, we're close. Uh, if, you know, we're saying year thirteen, and we have paid it on, that we can spend.
Go with that.
Can I have a quick question?
Sure.
Uh, Mister Lyons, if we go through with this uh levy idea, and let's say a grant comes up to uh pay for good fortune at some time in the near future, can we apply to that grant and then apply that and cancel the levy? Uh, or does it have to ride out?
We can, we vote every year to levy the taxes, right? So we would just not levy the taxes at some point.
Right, my only hesitation is, you know, just in terms of what the terms of the grant is, and the grant allows us to pay back that Sid loan. There's no problem, and.
Okay.
If uh however, when you take out bonds, sometimes uh they can't be paid off early, because the people who are out there buying them are trying to buy a stream of income for a certain number of years, which depends upon whether the bond is called. So we'll have to find out if this is going to be callable or not. Callable bond usually adds a little bit higher interest rate. Uh, because people don't know how, you know, how long it'll be. So I mean, there's those questions, and it's just not an E P.
Alright, thank you.
Anybody else? Any other questions on this?
One more question.
Sure.
Mister Ness, uh, when we attended that meeting, didn't Holly Bartone say that they had received our application for the Sid?
That was just, yes, but that was just a petition to participate in the Sid.
Okay. So we really haven't actually applied for it yet?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Hey, new business, or is there any other old business? There are none, new business. Uh, discussion on the city plan. Will we want to go, whether we want to open it up for bids, how we want to do this, are we ready to do something?
Well, I thi- I think we're close to it. We have community development meeting on Thursday before the committee of the whole. Uh, I was going to discuss that with the committee at that point. And with that new development, see what, where we want to go.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay. Also under new business, we have an expenditure approval, Travelers Insurance Company, for eighty-two thousand three hundred eighteen dollars, renewal of various insurance policies. Are any questions on this?
Motion for approval.
So I agree. You made the motion to approve, Mrs. Thompson, second by Mister Lunder. Roll call, please.
Miss Moore?
Aye.
Miss Thompson?
Aye.
Mister Morris?
Aye.
Mister Bittner?
Aye.
Mister Shaboo?
Aye.
Mister Lunder?
Aye.
Mister Johnson?
Aye. Okay, we're back to open to the public to speak again. If you'd like to speak, come to the lectern, state your name and address to the record. This is your opportunity to speak to council. Again, not a back and forth, and again, there's a ten-minute time limit.
Nicholas Orver, uh seventy-four sixteen, Larkspur Drive. Uh, good evening, um, Mister President, this is Vice President, Mayor. Uh, I handed uh to everybody a copy of this, I'm going to read it to you. I just wanted, this is not me um being mad or anything, this is just me coming up here as a representative of my communities uh in the neighborhood that I live in. Just to put this on record. Alright, so I, Nicholas Orver, have been resident of Menor on the Lake since spring of twenty sixteen. I live at seventy-four sixteen, Larkspur Drive, my wife and son. Since that time, there's been an increasingly number of feral cats that have colonized around the Larkspur Drive. Goldenrod Drive community. I attended the city ordinance meeting regarding drafting up agreeable solutions to control these feral cat colonies citywide, which is ordinance twenty seventeen oh twenty-one, uh that was passed on July twenty-fifth seventeen. And then uh pursuing uh ordinance twenty-two oh seventeen, passed on six thirty twenty-two, and also ordinance twenty seventeen oh twenty-one, passed uh on seven twenty-five seventeen, and I had that entered twice because it corresponds to both six eighteen point nine, again, form. Uh, ordinance, so anyway. Over the last few years, uh Tim Geno, who resides at seventy-four fifteen, Larkspur Drive, and I have reached out to the city council city for guidance on numerous occasions by county council meetings and talking with council members and other city administrators about the growing number of situations that we have encountered, and what we can do to rectify the problems. Situation being the ever increasingly number of feral cats randomly showing up in the neighborhood to either try and join the existing colony, bartend to new territory for mates. We do not know how uh they are getting here, either someone is abandoning them or uh abandoning them near here, or the feral cat colony caregiver finds these cats and brings them here themselves. Uh, there have been multiple litters for multiple feral female cats, one of them having more than one litter throughout the years. Uh, cats falling victim to traffic and ending up being hanged or even worse, killed, and us, as parents uh are forced to clean it up before our children see it. Uh, these are just three brief examples of what we have gone through since the ordinance passed. Uh, during the winter of April twenty twenty, Tim discovered a litter of kittens that were only a few days old by our judgment. Two hundred and three had frozen to death. Uh, the third cat, uh we found a caregiver group through Facebook, uh who later informed us that that cat had passed away. Uh, this was the first time that we had realized that something needs to be done, because the feral cat colony caregiver is not taking the appropriate actions to ensure that these cats are the best health and being taken care of properly. Tim started to research organizations that would help us get this under control. He found a group called Community Cat Companions and was directed to the Menor Community Cats MCC group, which we all know, you know, very well. Um, one of the approved organizations by the city to help the disorderness. Uh, they were incredibly helpful in assisting us and informing us on how to trap these cats and make sure they have, uh, we followed their procedures so that the process would go smoothly. Total, the collaboration between Tim and MCC was successful with the trapping of using six cats. Uh, the problem settled down for a bit, but later in the summer, the problem started to get out of control again. Uh, residents within this community like to plant gardens and grow absorbent herbs and vegetables. Uh, over the course of this period, one neighbor has given up altogether on planting gardens because cats roamed them. And they would use the area to defecate or mark their territories in the plants, country, and vegetables, and edible soil can can. Uh, some of us enjoy gardening too much and have produced ways of preventing these cats from destroying our hardware where uh when there is a new cat that is introduced to the feral cat colony, the males will go around and spray everything they can. Uh, I watch cats all the time, walk from house to house, spraying plants, trees, bushes, fences, car wheels, front door, male packages, kids' toys, gardening equipment, and the sightings of houses. Uh, at my house specifically, the cats will walk through my front garden, spraying the flowers, bushes, uh garden floor, defecating in my flower bed, into my backyard where they spray my crow cover, my pantry furniture, and they defecate on the wood that I have lining the fence that is being dried in season that I use to heat my house. And when they do that, I have to discard that wood. I cannot burn it in my house, it's disgusting. We have reached, uh, we have researched and taken steps uh to try preventing these cats from doing this, but there never seems to be an affordable or reasonable way to stop this, or at best minimize the issue. Sometimes the smell of ammonia is so strong that you can't even be outside and open up the windows until it has been washed off uh or uh the area where it's been sprayed. Another incident, uh, this one, you know, might get somebody. Another incident being on August twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two, one of my neighbors left their house in their vehicle. And and undiscovered by them, there was a kitten somewhere either in the engine bay or in the wheel well vehicle. Once they started to drive down the road, the kitten fell, tragically ran over, passed away. All of this happened directly in the view of three innocent children who will never forget the events that happened that happened. As aforementioned, this is not the first time that we, the parents, have had to remove a deceased cat from the roadway. In the wake of this tragedy event, Tim's wife went over to the feral cat colony caregiver's house at seventy-four twenty-nine Goldenrod Drive, where feral cats all congregate and had a conversation with the owner of the house. It was discussed that the feral cat colony has gotten out of hand, and that something needs to be done to reduce the number of feral cats in the area, and the exposure risk to the animals needs to be reduced. We really truly felt that our frustrations had finally been heard, and our grief was taken seriously by the feral cat colony caregiver. Uh, we are now going into another summer, and there are more new cats that roam the area, trying to find their spot in the feral cat colony. No noticeable steps have been taken by the feral cat colony caregiver to reduce the size of the colony and try to control an appropriate area for the cats to use a litter box or some sort of mechanism to relieve themselves and reduce the risk of these cat victims of an accident. We have since noticed in passing that on average, there's about ten to fifteen cats uh sitting in this person's yard. She leaves the garage door open all night, all day and all night. It attracts scum and raccoons in the area that are, that are nuisance helpless animals that find in the Menor on the Lake City Ordinance six eighteen point nineteen. Uh, they use our yards and fences and fence lines as highways. Uh, they will fight with the cats so that they too can get food. Scums will use their defense mechanisms and spray, which can linger around for a while. Uh, other neighbors that I have talked on Goldenrod have said that they have noticed even more cats roaming around uh their street than normal, and more than what we are seeing on Larkspur. Tim Geno and I have had multiple conversations with our city council representative, uh Mister David Chabot uh over the last few years regarding the ever increasingly number of new feral cats in the colony that don't look like they have been accounted for by one or more of the animal welfare organizations approved by the city for the practice of trapping and release, and one of the many requirements under ordinance six eighteen point twenty. Majority of these conversations were general, general topics of discussion while seeing him walk and run the neighborhood, uh and they were good, concluded with him saying that he will investigate the registration of this specific colony and make sure that the ordinance is being followed accordingly. Uh, unfortunately to us directly, there was never follow-up to this investigation until recently. Um, before the incident on August fourteenth, twenty twenty-two, we decided to go to the city council meeting on August ninth, twenty twenty-two, to talk to Mayor Eva himself. Uh, he directed us to send him an email uh with what was happening, and he will personally examine the matter. Tim sent him an email briefly discussing the incident uh with the kittens falling out of the moving vehicle, and describing how we have thirteen cats, two kittens, nine skunks on the property. Uh, there were videos and pictures sent by request of the mayor, uh but to our surprise, there was no response from the office of the mayor. Uh, but now following that, you know, we do understand that there had been uh processes taken. Um, now that the warmer months are here and the temperatures continue to decline, we will be seeing an increase in activity on this feral cat colony. We have to implement our controls to safeguard our property from damage, and we will have to pay the prices for damages caused by the feral cats. We will be the ones fighting to make sure that we can enjoy the outside as much as possible, all while feral cat colony will increase in size, in size, and we will be forced to deal with it for another season. Uh, I got a couple statements from my neighbors. Tom Fletcher, who lives at seventy-four seventeen Goldenrod Drive, just two hours west of the feral cat colony caregiver's home, states uh that they have tried several methods to prevent these cats from entering their property. Uh, the cats will use their flower beds in the front of the house and the backyard as a spot to relieve themselves. The smell of ammonia and fecal matter travels inside their house when they open the windows. The cats will spray his two young children's toys, and they must be washed off every time they go outside. Uh, another neighbor's statement, Anthony Augusta, who lives at seventy-four twenty-two Larkspur Drive, uh directly next to me, whose property is diagonally behind the feral cat colony caregiver's yard, has mentioned to me that the cats are a detriment to his yard. His animals and his family's health. They cannot keep a vegetable garden and herb garden anymore, uh because it is constantly filled with cat feces. They are now using his flower beds every day as a personal litter box. Smell of ammonia and fecal matter travels inside the house when uh they open the windows. Cats are found sleeping straight in the patio furniture, and his wife has stepped in cat fecal matter trying to get her pets inside. Uh, she also says that during the day, the cats will try to enter her house from the dog door on the patio. Uh, they have also witnessed their cats lunging and killing local birds that are native to the area.
Your ten minutes are up, but I will give you one more minute to just wrap it up.
Okay, this is the part that I kind of want to get to anyway. Thank you, Mr. President. I respectfully ask that this matter be taken into consideration and investigated further, as there have been multiple attempts to us, by us, to manage the problems ourselves. Uh, we are looking for a permanent solution from the city officials. We do not need a temporary solution for an ongoing dilemma. One suggestion by me and agreed upon by neighbors, uh is that the city amend the ordinances. Some amendments could include limiting the number of cats allowed in the feral cat colony. Uh, a requirement to have litter boxes for each individual cat in the colony, harsh defines and or penalties. Make it into a requirement to only feed the cats during specific times of the day and to only feed them out. Uh, and I reference Michigan State University College Law Detail, discussing the feral cat population control. Feral cats often form colonies that cloud in a particular location around a common food source such as a dumpster, open garbage dump, or where people offer handouts. The colony size is necessarily dependent on the size of food that is left for them. Uh, briefly, just kind of going through before my minute is up, um I think we should also, could also probably look into amending this ordinance to make it a point that if you're going to be caretaker or caregiver of these cats, that you need to take ownership, and then uh if you take ownership, uh because they're not considered wild animals according to the Ohio State Revised Code, uh they're considered companion animals, uh according to the Ohio Revised Code, uh that if you take ownership of these cats, uh then that you can be, you know, charged importantly uh for not taking care of the cats. But the rest of it, I'm sure you guys, uh, you both will read.
Yes, maybe we'll enter it into the minutes as well. Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? Please come to the lectern, state your name, not us, for the record. Hearing none, we will close this portion of the open to the public to speak. And move on to announcements and settings of meetings. First of all, the public hearing on resolution number twenty twenty-three dash R dash fifteen is scheduled for Tuesday, June twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three at seven P M. We're going to schedule a public hearing on twenty twenty-two dash O dash twenty-five for July twenty-fifth at seven P M. Community develop? July twenty-fifth, seven P M is the data, which is our regular scheduled meeting of council. Community Development Committee meeting is Thursday, June fifteenth, twenty twenty-three at six P M. Committee of the Hall meeting is Thursday, June fifteenth, twenty twenty-three at seven P M. Topic being trees in the right of way. Is there any other meetings? Or to commissions that are meeting? Yes.
Planning and zoning, latest is July tenth, right?
Correct.
Six o'clock.
Planning and zoning, July tenth at six o'clock.
And stargazing is still set tentatively for the twenty-third at nine P M, just stay tuned to Facebook.
Stargazing, the twenty-third at?
Nine P M.
Nine P M.
At City Hall?
It's going to be, uh, he's going to move it to overlook.
Oh, he's going to move it to overlook?
Yes.
Okay.
Stargazing with Parks and Recreation at Lake Overlook at nine P M on the twenty-third. Next regular agenda meeting is Thursday, June twenty-second at six P M. Next regular meeting of council, June twenty-seventh at seven P M. Any other boards, commissions, meetings? Motion for adjournment.
Second.
Motion to adjourn by Mister Morris, second by Mrs. Thompson. Roll call, please.
Miss Moore?
Aye.
Miss Thompson?
Aye.
Mister Morris?
Aye.
Mister Bittner?
Aye.
Mister Shaboo?
Aye.
Mister Lunder?
Aye.
Mister Johnson?
Aye. This meeting is adjourned.